It kind of comes back to it's like enjoyment of property or something, right? Even our noise doesn't have like a decimal level and it's if you're making, I forget if they call it noxious and... But something, there's something like that.
You're bothering your neighbor.
Yeah, that's what it's trying to cover is. But I forget how exactly they worded it.
We're going due to have another referendum on our silent Sunday's. So, it's, I'm getting the impression that if the use is limited to wood chipping, and if we get, if we can write something into this which would ensure that there's some kind of oversight by Metro Vancouver, and ensure that there's the licensing of a facility to how it's used and the zoning are all kind of tied together, that that would be formidable.
So it's something like, like the APC would support these transferring tree debris, subject to Metro Vancouver, appropriate Metro Vancouver regulations or something.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, is the, are we looking for Metro to come out and monitor it or do anything or what?
We could look for that, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, who knows what they do.
If they require a license, they should actually be required to come and provide some oversight.
So we can, we can jump on Metro Vancouver if there's a problem.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
So what do landscapers do with their green white?
That's what I want to know.
I mean, if it's like. Are, are landscapers? The ones on the island? That's a good question.
I mean, it just depends on the scale. Certain extent you can put it in your compost, right?
Because Home Garden has a lot of contracts they make.
I know we've had some complaints from some places where you'd be amazed at like some of the like big rural lots that just let people dump. And you go back and it's impressive amount that gets, you know, sort of squirreled away.
Oh yeah?
And we could write something into this recommendation, you know, that suggests that the on-island landscapers be surveyed and encouraged to use the facility.
Yeah.
I don't know that we could do that.
Yeah, but just dump them in bushes and firehouses too.
Yeah, that's quite true.
Yeah.
How's it be drier and drier summers?
Well, I, I guess, I guess the question is, I mean, staff would like to see composting added, and I'm not sure that that's what we would want if it's odorifer assessment.
It's, we need to have composting on the island, it'd be great, but it has to be done carefully. And it has to be done by someone who wants to do it. And you don't want to force it on somebody to do it because then it won't be done well.
Right. So I don't think we would encourage it. And my impression is the reason staff wants it is to bring already unlawful use into some kind of lawful condition. But it's already occurring.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, there's woodchips there that sit forever at some point you say, oh, they got.
So that's the concern I have, going full circle with this, is if we support this request for woodchipping on site, are we, is this a de facto support for illegal composting on the property?
I would say no, and, and if by not allowing composting, we make sure that it's trucked out regularly, so if there is odor, if there is heat, or any kind of byproduct that's unpleasant for the area, we've got a handle to, to do something about it. If we allow composting, we're certain screws. It sounds like tomorrow.
Okay, so on the matter of wood chipping, on the matter of the transfer station, the advisory planning commission would recommend in favor of including that use with the proviso that there is oversight by the licensing authority, Metro Vancouver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Of a motion to that effect?
Okay, say that again, please? I didn't realize that's what we were doing. On the matter of the transfer station.
On the matter of the transfer station, the APC supports adding that use to the land with the proviso that the, that the licensing authority, Metro Vancouver, provide on oversight of the operation. Moving on to this, oh, sorry, that's, that's a motion.
Uh, I can't.
All right, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Second, David Rynch, all in favor?
What about that?
Kind of a survey.
Comments? I just like, what about this chipping thing?
No.
What about the chipping?
What about chipping? Are you gonna chip up there?
Chip for the cherry.
The history is, the last time they did it, the neighbor shut it down because of the noise. So unless, I would say, if he wants to have a chipper, all the neighbors have to agree with it.
How close is the nearest neighbor?
They're right all around him.
So I think chipping should be done on the developing, the sites that have the trees cut down. It's a two or three day operation and then it moves on to another place. It's, it might be unpleasant for those days, but, but it's way better than having a.
It won't be unpleasant forever, but the.
Yeah, I think he shouldn't.
Okay, so we're going, I'm trying to put it in a circle here.
Well, really, chipping is a different operation.
Yeah, no, the transfer station, yes.
The whole reason he wants a transfer station, or at least a large part of the reason he wants it is to be able to chip chip there.
Okay, well, he was told he wasn't allowed to chip there.
Right.
So what's he doing? And then run up the other side or?
Apparently.
Well.
Forget it, yeah.
I just think there should be some reference to the neighbors and the chippers.
If he wants to collect tree stumps until he's got a full truckload, great, but he can't collect tree stumps and chip them and then ship.
So, do we put in language that says for chipping elsewhere?
Yeah. Previously checked.
He can already chip elsewhere.
But he can't combine.
Oh, but he can't combine.
What it becomes is a commercial, well, it's always a commercial chipping.
All right, so would you like to have a question?
Or we just say this, or just have that, and say this, this does not change the current ruling, which does not allow chipping on the site, chipping, you know, like, so it's like, this does, this precludes chipping on site or something.
So that the APC supports the inclusion of a transfer station on the site, but without including woodchipping as an included use.
Yeah.
On site.
On site.
On site.
On site woodchipping.
Yeah.
That works for our question.
How's that look, Steph?
She's doing her Christmas list.
Uh, that the advisory planning commission supports the inclusion of a transfer station on the site. There's seven, these are Buchanan Road, but does not include the additional use of woodchipping on that site.
But you have the regulation by Metro Vancouver.
Oh yeah, so.
And?
And? And? No, I don't mix it up. Just do the original one and then add, okay, the APC supports adding that use to the land, with the provision, licensing authority, Metro Vancouver, provide oversight operation, but does not include the additional woodchipping.
It does not support the.
Okay, that's over at the end, okay. Okay. Want to hear it again?
Yes.
Even though I'm gonna get blinded back anyways.
Right.
That the advisory planning commission support the inclusion of a transfer station on the 730 Buchanan Road, add, adding that use to the land zoning with the proviso that licensing authority, Metro Vancouver, provide oversight to the oper, of the operation, but does not include the additional, does not support the inclusion.
Yes.
Of onsite chipping.
Not support the inclusion of onsite chipping, of woodchipping onsite.
Sure. So in terms of the oversight by Metro Vancouver, unfortunately, I prepared for this about five o'clock this afternoon. If I'd prepared earlier, I would have phoned friends at Metro Vancouver and said, well, what kind of oversight is there? Because I, I'm quite surprised at the term transfer station. There are six or seven transfer stations in Metro Vancouver. They are big outfits. Big, serious places with all kinds of employees doing all kinds of things, and they usually have all kinds of different things. So to have this call to transfer station, I just find strange, and I would have liked to have found out, but unfortunately, I didn't do my reading, I feel too late. So I don't know, anyway, the phones are saying that.
Maybe the Muni needs to, have you done that, Daniel asked, talked to?
Something, I haven't talked specifically about, that like last time we talked, it was just that they were asking about, okay, does the land use, you know, allow? No, it doesn't, they don't really have this application, but it's on hold until they get the zoning.
Can you just simply say that you're requiring designation of demand to include an area in which to accumulate and store wood and?
Debris.
Wood debris.
Yeah, like one and two, on page two and four, is the temporary storage of tree debris and the temporary, and so on, until it reaches, oh, that's fine.
Except to warn.
Except for woodchipping.
It's up above it, it says woodchipping and, so we ditch that part, the other part's okay.
Well, you can bring woodchips in.
Exactly, bring woodchips in until you got a big enough load to take it.
But the conversation with, with the authority might be a useful place for them maybe to have. Just so Eddie does whatever the help he wants.
Perhaps the motion shouldn't include the words transfer station?
I think that's, I think that's what I was going, yeah, we just talked about what's gonna happen there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this. I mean, I think I agree that, yeah, what we allow as a transfer station is very broad. And we want to allow.
Maybe you don't want it to be a transfer station. When we finally do have a transfer station here, it'll be a municipal transfer station, not a private one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's good Metro can just call it for their purposes, I don't know what they call it, but, yeah. But ours zoning just allow what he wants to do and that's. You know, you'd allow that limited piece of it, and then Metro Vancouver could license it to do that limited, same limited part.
Does Bowman Ways just not have enough debris? Is that all part behind it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So that's why they can't, can't do it, there's no.
Probably not interested in that either.
They're press for this.
And they.
Yeah.
So do we have any motion?
Okay, hold on.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion we could build on?
Oh, oh, we're, yeah, we're moving, yeah.
Well, we were just changing it to not include the term transfer station.
Right, so what did I say?
Facility. But, but the issue is being able to combine loads.
Tree debris facility.
And, and that's what was special about the transfer, so we needed to include that in storage tree.
Yeah, collection, combination and storage, perhaps.
Short-term storage.
Yeah. The APCs. The like, the temporary storage and.
Temporary storage, when you say words, temporary storage of tree debris until it reaches such an amount to warrant chipping, and the temporary storage of trees until it reaches such a, yeah. Trucking, load, container transport, yeah, actually, number two is all you need.
Yeah, so just chip out number one.
And this is number two?
Yeah.
If you go back to that page thirty-two.
Yeah, forty-five.
Go to the first paragraph of the request, and just take out the last sentence.
Yeah.
And then go down to the middle part where there are two things in the request, take out number one.
Just have number two.
We can't leave the word transfer station in the first paragraph.
No, yeah, no.
But if he wants to sell woodchips, that's just right.
Yeah.
Truck them back.
So we do lose that metro oversight then?
No, we don't need to lose metro oversight, you're right.
Well, I don't think you're gonna get it unless you actually have a transfer station, that's what we just read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's okay, legally, basically, nothing else.
It's better to just allow woodchipping than, than have them not organize his garbage, alternate garbage transfer station.
I think some of that is companies.
It's next step.
I need to have with Metro Vancouver to say, do they need the words transfer station? Or can we just, can the zoning say it allows for, you know?
Those uses.
Those uses, like the specific uses he wants to do, and then they can license it as a transfer station, but it's, you know, the license would be limited to these things.
Yeah, yeah. Because he'll be, he'll be getting wrecked cars and.
That's, that's the next step. Let's get through this one.
So we're leaving the oversight of Metro Vancouver?
I think we can't, I think we, no, I wait, we can leave it in. There, there, there's still license, there's still going to be licensing. Whatever this facility is.
Oh, they need a license, whatever it is, huh?
Yeah, they're gonna license it, whatever it is, and so they can provide the oversight, so we should ask for that.
Okay, like for him to do just number two on his list, he would need a Metro Vancouver license.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
You would?
Yeah.
Isn't that non-municipal area control?
No, we can do it on municipal property, we can do it without a license. But a private to, to store tree debris from off, from off-site, to combine your loads on a property from, from places from off your site, you need a Metro Vancouver license.
Says licenses will be required from privately operated land those transfer stations, material recovery facilities, storage facilities, and certain brokers will be, that's all, so that's not, that's not the case.
So how are we doing with this motion?
APC support the temporary storage of tree debris until it reaches such a mission amount for full load trucking and/or full load container transportation to transfer stations of the lower median land on 730 Buchanan Road with the provision that licensing authority, Metro Vancouver, provide oversight of the operation, but the APC does not support the inclusion of additional use of woodchipping on that site.
Perfect.
Perfect, yes.
Yeah.
Move with David McCullum.
Question, is he allowed to chip? Is he presently allowed to chip at all?
Not onsite.
Not onsite.
No, even his own debris?
Oh, well, his own debris is a residential use.
So I think he could on his site with his chipper, his, his own, same as anywhere else, I guess, subject to.
But is he gonna try to chip on his own property?
No.
Probably well-chipped.
Do I have a second or do the motion? David Rynch, all in favor? To me, Alice.
Well done.
Okay, part two of this, of this journey. So, can, can also like to be able to chip up?
He's doing that really slowly now.
Do we have vehicle chipping as, as an associated use of the property? In impound lot? Have we heard from the RCMP about this?
We have, not as a part of this application, but in general, we have heard from, from the RCMP and from the marina in particular, and Nancy Phillips Square. At various times, they've had sort of, I think that there's one, there's one tow truck operator on the island who would like an impact facility. Very soon, it's got businesses.
Well, there is one tow truck operator.
Yeah, to, to send letters into municipalities saying, we need an impound facility.
We do need an impound.
They would like us to operate, I mean, as more work comes in, but. So yeah, so the concept of an impound facility, people on island have been requesting.
So why, why Cameron, why not anywhere else?
Uh, because it's the only, it's the only single place.
He's industrial zone land, that's far away from.
Is there room on the industrial zone land?
Absolutely. It's only twenty by forty, four cars.
It's quite small.
That's what we want, no, this impound.
Twenty.
By forty, four cars.
Twenty feet by forty feet. Hmm, it's four cars.
Yeah.
Well, not nearly enough.
Probably not, but it's a start, because they got to fence it, they got to put barbed wire, they got to lock it up, and you know, all that business.
Big dogs.
Get a dog.
Sirens, guards.
He has said, though, if the impound need is such that can be profitable, then fencing will be provided to enclose an area. So he's asking permission, go ahead and just park him on land.
So I think, I mean, I think this is oddly phrased, but how he does it is, he's not convinced that he's gonna do an impound facility. He's more just, he has to apply for the transfer station, he's, he's thinking about, okay, I could do an impound facility. So I think he's saying, if, if, if only an impound facility is profitable, then he'll fence it and they have to use it.
I don't think advisory planning commission cares whether his business is profitable or not. So, so we either think that it's a good idea, he's gonna have some air to store there, or we don't.
But only if, yeah, he can't just.
Kind of, you need to have actually operational vehicles.
And he'll fence from day one.
He would have to.
Yeah.
I think it has to be. I think that's just bad language.
I think it is.
Well, it's more than that, dude, it's quite clear the way it's written, that the vehicles here just gonna be stored somewhere on the land, for, you know, until it proves out that the impound facility is profitable.
And it's worth its while.
I, I think the issue, though, is liability. If anything happens to a vehicle on his property, and it's not protected, he'd be liable for that damage.
I talked to the tow truck driver, and he said, absolutely, they'll put up a fence.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could stipulate.
I don't think we need to provide legal advice either. I don't think we're, it's a question of whether restoring vehicles on this property or not.
I, I think, I think we should let them, we should support the vehicle impound facility, fenced impound in a chip pound facility.
I journeyed to the site Google Earth today from a street view, and street view goes right up into the facility and shows you some of the vehicles that were there when it was street viewed.
They aren't impounded, though.
Well, they're, they're, they are, however, derelict.
Yes.
No, he's going to be fixing them up.
Chipping.
They're there, they're.
So, I mean, again, the concern might be one about, you know, if, if the vehicles stay there for an indefinite amount of time, leaching, leaching into the surrounding environment becomes a concern.
Oh, that's, that's just his junkyard.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do that.
The bylaws in Bowen Island say you can't have more than one derelict vehicle on your property. And yet, you can look at that place, and you can look at a place like Mike Burton's place, which has got about twelve old cars sitting around the back, and we don't seem to do anything about it. And it's not, there, there are other properties that have several cars sitting, that have been sitting for years, and we don't seem to enforce them.
All on the road?
Right.
And if we enforce those ordinances, we'd have them hauled to an impound facility.
If only there were.
Now we have one.
Now we have one.
We can put everything on it.
And I don't think you're gonna limit it to four vehicles.
It's gonna fill up in a hurry.
He's, he's gonna make money towing his own cars.
It's a little bit like the earlier application, stop rentals. So.
So shall we, is it, shall we support an impound facility?
Yes.
Proactively fenced and monitored or something.
Well, it, it's his liability.
It's his problem.
But it should be fenced, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't put a limit on the size.
Because it's his liability, it's the tow truck person that drove them, or, then it goes, like, anyway, I don't think the liability just sticks with Eddie.
So, but what's the difference between an impound facility, a nicely worded facility, and a junkyard? Like, it's gonna stay forever, like impound suggests it's on its way to go somewhere else.
Not necessarily. You can have a car impounded that's insured and drivable, and has been parked on somebody's private property for a month, and you've notified the owner or tried to, and the car has not been moved, you take it away, it's not a junk car, the owner may go back and play any.
It's kind of like a pawn shop for that.
No, impound.
The vehicles that he describes, the vehicles that he describes are all operational vehicles, there are three types.
There can also be.
Dedicated to vehicles impacted by the RCMP, municipality, or tow vehicles for private buying businesses in violation of parking regulations.
Okay.
So those sound like they would most likely be.
So, so the, the municipality, if they went to Burton's and said, you can't have these vehicles here, they would, they could be impounded, and that would fall under this. So I think that's, that's where we want to be.
And Eddie charges ten bucks a day for every car that's sitting there, he should be able to make some money.
I'm sure he's gonna charge more than ten bucks a day.
Car parts, right? I mean, even at ten bucks a day, you do already.
Yeah, actually, he, he could, I, I'm not sure how impound facilities in the city go.
Thirty-five dollars.
Well, but who regulates that? I mean, he could actually.
It's a contract between the impound operator and the municipality.
So we, we should somehow put it in there that he can't just charge, if, if we're, if we are in, if a municipality is, and RCMP is impounding vehicles, you can't, I think you need to be able to have an agreed rate for the impound, so that they're not charging a hundred dollars a day just because he wants to.
It'd be selling your car.
I think that is a good point, because he, he's been known to overcharge.
But, but that's getting outside of our scope, isn't it?
I think so, yeah.
Well, well, I think, I think, though, if we, if we approve it, you know, and, and we give them basically an unlimited amount, and provided that, that there's an agreement with the municipality and RCMP on impound rates.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
And I think you put that in.
Or something like that.
Yeah. Because the, because the city ones must be licensed, the city must give a license to them, I would think. Because they have to all charge around the same rate or, or, you know, let different tow truck drivers.
Oh, shop it.
Yeah.
It's like if somebody parks in the snug, or the marina parking lot for a week, and they get towed, and they go, there needs to be some, some way to say, you don't just get charged, five thousand dollars to get your car back.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they're towing them to Vancouver now, imagine what that costs, that's four hundred dollars or something like that, just get them over there.
When I was looking after Renaissance lot there, there were people leaving their cars without plates, and finally trying to get in touch with them was impossible. I found a company in Vancouver who drive over here, pick the car up, tow it away, and with no questions asked. Car was gone.
Towing with.
Chop chop.
Through myself, and Renaissance, there was never a comeback because the cars were gone. And the people came back and said, where's my car? I'd say, well, it's been deserted, it was left here three months ago, and we took, got rid of it. You can get in touch with this company, and they said, okay. And then either they didn't get in touch, or they did and they found the car had been chopped up and was gone. If a car's parked on private or public property, apparently with expired insurance, it's considered to have been discarded.
Interesting.
I mean, you can't, you can't just go and park your car in somebody's yard and walk away and leave it.
I think the other big problem we have is from the bylaw perspective, that, you know, people know that there's not, there's no repercussions to having your car parked anywhere as far as long as you want, and nothing's gonna happen.
But if there were an impound facility, right?
Yeah, that changes again. First getting to October, yeah.
I'm sorry, I need to repump that.
We have a motion.
The advisory planning commission is giddy with power.
Goes in favor? That's the first part of every one.
APC support the operation of an impound facility on 730 Buchanan Road with the condition that the area be fenced, and provided that there is an agreement with the RCMP, the municipality, and privacy, private, privacy property owners that set reasonable rates.
And who's the impound?
Well, because that's the third one, it's gonna be a business or, whether the business owner, violation of parking regulations, that would be the.
That's municipality.
That's municipality. Call them, you need them.
And RCMP and Muni is always.
Okay? Not privacy property owners?
Otherwise, we're gonna call all the private property owners, and they won't charge.
Impound rates. Do you still want to leave that fence bit in, is that what you're earlier?
Yeah.
Where, do I see?
Oh, six year. Well, yes, because then we know where we've said yes to the cars, and. Well, yes, because then we know where we've said yes to the cars, and all his other cars are
So he's proposing an area
So we could get him to impound his own cars.
Twenty by forty feet, fenced.
Like this room.
But do we, do we want to, to set the size, because if this is, like, they may want to
He, he has set the size, we can just agree with the set of the size, I think so.
Well, I think twenty by forty feet, or whatever he said, is not adequate, I think, I think we
Or we say yes to that, and then he can ask to make it bigger.
Well, well, the problem is if he wants to make it bigger, then he's gotta come back for rezoning.
Or does he?
Or does he?
Yeah, if it's setting it down.
Just say impound area.
The impound facility, to meet the needs of the municipality, RCMP on Bowen Island, we don't want cars from somewhere else.
Do you recommend that, that the area be fenced
Unsecured.
Unsecured from the outset?
Yeah.
Because he says, because he says, when it gets profitable, almost, from the outset.
Okay.
And, and that there be no specified limit to the size of the yard.
Then chicken wire fits.
Or a minimum, twenty by forty.
I would, I mean, he would go there, if he, if he gets six vehicles on day one, he's already beyond the fences.
Yeah.
How are we doing now?
So, yeah.
We're the private property.
The APC support the operation of an impound facility with the condition that the area be fenced and secured from the outset, that there be no specified limit to the size of the yard, and provided that there is an agreement with the RCMP and Muni that sets reasonable impound rates.
Excellent, worth of motion.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Dennis, second, David Rynch, all in favor? I have a motion to have another, have another meeting another day?
Date?
Oh, so check that date, so, yeah, this one is a bit of a shock. Oh, what is it?
December twenty-fifth.
Already?
No.
November twenty-fifth.
November twentieth.
Is this the, no, it's not.